Welcome to the 5:30 PM, March 28, 2023, Presentations City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first is the truth. Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, this is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions or requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. City Manager, Special Recognitions and Presentations, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. The first item of business this evening is Item 4A, which is the Employee of the Month for March 2023. We'd like to recognize Officer Joey Hamm of the Titusville Police Department as the city's Employee of the Month for March 2023. And Commander Matt Demmon will come up to do the presentation. Is that better? All right. It's truly an honor to be up here this evening to represent our agency and to present Officer Joey Hamm with this award. Back in the beginning of February 2023, while working our Patrol Division, Officer Hamm was dispatched to a call of an elderly female who was in a wheelchair, who was having a hard time getting around. We'd received a few calls and Officer Hamm was dispatched and went to render her some service. And when he got out there, he found out that she was homeless and needed some help. So he took it upon himself to try and get her to where she needed to be. Well, her wheelchair wouldn't fit in the car because he was just going to give her a ride. And unbeknown to us, he decided that he would just push her. And as he started to push her, it started to pour down rain. And instead of stopping or asking anybody for help, Officer Hamm decided that he would go ahead and push her to where she needed to go. Out of the kindness of his own heart, he went ahead and paid for a hotel room for her on his own dollar, because that's the kind of guy he is. And I think the only reason that we knew any of this was happening and that he had done such a nice deed was because as he's pushing her to the hotel room, it starts pouring down rain. And he doesn't stop, he doesn't ask anybody for help. He continues to push her to the hotel, which was approximately two miles away. Couldn't pick the hotel any closer, huh? But Joey is truly the epitome of what a servant leader is in your community. This is truly who he is as a police officer. And he's probably mortified up here right now, receiving all this recognition. Because again, he didn't say anything to anybody. Had it not been for social media, we wouldn't have known about it. So it's truly an honor for me to be up here this evening and to help recognize him for this award.
Thank you.
Congratulations, that's awesome. Do a quick picture here. Awesome, well done, well done. Appreciate it, thank you.
Yep. And Mayor, the next item is Item 4B, which is a proclamation for the American Red Cross Month. And with your permission, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Official proclamation for the City of Titusville, Florida. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Titusville, Florida, and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure that no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and is exemplified by people of the City of Titusville, Florida, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope for people in need in their most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Claire Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. Whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference in neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, comfort for families displaced by homes fires or disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people who have sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military families and their veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service. Using vital skills like first aid CPR to help others survive medical emergency or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones that are separated by crises around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March, in honor of all those who fulfill Claire Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Therefore, I, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor of the City of Titusville, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested by me and the laws of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as and encourage all citizens of the City of Titusville to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. The American Red Cross Month, signed, Daniel E. Diesel, Mayor.
There you are, come on up, thank you. Unfortunately, with the hurricanes that we've had, we've gotten to see just how much they help us. Whether somebody has a house burned down or has a house flood out, they're always the first ones there. And I hope that we can support them because that's the way we can reach out and they become the tool for us to help. But I can't say enough, and the number of times we've had to use the word, "Hey, have you called the Red Cross?" I can't say that enough. And I can't thank you enough, and that certainly doesn't do it justice, but thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And again, I want to reiterate what the mayor said. We ask that you, at least everyone, you have a role with the Red Cross. We want to be a part of the local community. So if you see a neighbor in need and there's a situation with a fire or anything, please feel free to call out and reach out to us at any time. And we ask now that you all, if we could get some new volunteers, because that's what our region is lacking right now. We are short volunteers. We just deployed 10 individuals to the Mississippi region to help support that initiative. We also have several that are in California right now, helping with the flooding and the excessive mudslides. So anything you can do, every dollar helps. Ninety cents of every dollar goes to help the community. So we ask that anyone who's interested in joining the Red Cross mission or wanting to help in any way or any capacity, go to redcross.org and sign up. We are always looking for volunteers to go out. We deploy internationally, so again, we have very limited resources and we always ask our local community to step up and help us during these times.
City Manager.
Onto Item 4C, which is the Support Services Department. And they'll be providing you their department overview. And as you recall, beginning in January, we're doing every month a departmental spotlight. We've done the Police Department, Fire Department, and now this is the Support Services Department, led by Assistant City Manager Tom Abate. Tom?
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. It's my honor to introduce this evening's department presentation. In addition to being the Assistant City Manager, it's my privilege to serve as the Support Services Department Head. The Support Services Department is staffed by 56 full-time, eight part-time, dedicated, and talented team members. In addition, the City Marina, which is part of Support Services, is staffed by eight F-3 Marina personnel, who are responsible for the day-to-day maintenance and operations of the municipal marina. Now, to give you a better understanding of what Support Services does, I'm going to use a metaphor, where one can compare the city government to a sport utility vehicle. The Public Works, Community Development, Police, and Fire are like the four wheels, where the rubber beats the road and they process most of the city's operations. The vehicle's steering wheel and the accelerator and brake are basically city council and city manager. They tell the city, you know, what direction and how fast to go. Now, the engine, the heart of the city, is Support Services. It's where many diverse functions take place simultaneously. Functions that are critical in propelling the vehicle forward. Support Services is where employees are paid and benefits administered, city revenues are collected, the city's community outreach via web and media is coordinated, the city's $121 million complex budget is built and executed, technology is leveraged, maintained, and implemented to meet service demand, services and goods are procured, the marina is operated, special events are coordinated, and the city's progress in meeting our strategic goals is measured. And there's a lot of other functions, too numerous to list. So while the engine is not seen from the road, it's the heartbeat that keeps the city going forward. So, just to show you some of the other functions, I'm going to show a short video. So without further ado, Sports...
When it comes to the operations of the Titusville City Government, when it comes to the... When it comes to... When it comes to the operations of the Titus... When it comes to the operations of the Titusville City Government, all roads lead to the Support Services Department. Support Services is a centralized hub that supplies the city departments with the means and resources to meet their goals and objectives, allowing them to better serve the community. Our department also provides citizens with customer service and utility assistance and operates the city marina. Simply put, we keep things running smoothly for both employees and citizens alike. Community Relations is the city's public relations arm responsible for conveying important information on city government, municipal services, public events, and more to citizens. To that end, we broadcast more than 80 live government meetings each year on various cable and online platforms. This year, we drastically enhance the quality of those broadcasts by researching and installing a new TV lighting system. Our department responds to and facilitates both web-based inquiries and walk-in requests as part of our public outreach to citizens. We produce promotional advertising and informative content through print and online capabilities, including the publication of a monthly city news page for both the Hometown News and Florida Today newspapers. We design and maintain the overall appearance and navigation of the city's website, including training and assisting city departments with webpage management as well as providing ADA support and assistance for their content. The department manages the city's official social media accounts on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram to support community outreach and economic development. We continuously produce public service announcements and other video production programs for both our TV broadcast and our city's YouTube channel. Over the past year, we have had an increase of 14.8% in our social media following. Titusville Talking Points Magazine, now in its seventh year of production, maintains its ongoing popularity and is often sought out weeks before its quarterly release date. Featuring the latest information on construction, local events, general information, and economic development, our staff is periodically contacted by other municipalities, inquiring about how to produce a magazine of their own. Together with its accompanying video, the magazine's featured articles on local business owners, nonprofit organizations, and historical news continue to be of high interest to citizens. Last but not least, our department manages the city's LED communication boards along US-1 in the downtown area. Recently, we proposed a design for two modern and attractive LED signs and subsequently partnered with a local company for fabrication and installation. Themed to highlight nature and space and our close proximity to water, the signs are currently in the final phase of construction with installation imminent. Customer service is responsible for the billing and payment processing for over 22,000 water utility customers. Each month, the department fields over 3,000 phone calls, 1,200 walk-in customers, and 900 email customers, along with 10,500 invoice cloud and IVR payments, 3,400 delinquency notices, 2,000 work orders, 240 cutoffs for non-payment, 11,000 cashier payment transactions, 250 water meter changeouts, and 190 utility service requests. In fiscal year '22, the department processed approximately 132,000 payment transactions in 126,000 online and automated phone payments. We reduced customer payment delinquency by 4.7%, identified 150 stuck meters, and completed adjustments to recover the lost revenue of over $26,000. The department recently hired a field services representative to assist with work orders, field verifications, and customer concerns. Notable goals for fiscal year '23 include hiring a part-time field services representative to assist the field services section, invitation for bid to obtain a new utility billing and printing vendor, conversion of Neptune meters to the new Neptune 360 software platform, continuing to reduce the delinquency in net collectible funds due for services by 3%, and continuing to review all utility accounts to ensure accuracy after conversion to the BSNA system. The Finance Department provides fiscal and financial support for the city. As a branch of Support Services, we are committed to delivering citywide support to achieve the city's strategic goals. Consisting of 12 full-time employees, Finance is responsible for all the city's financial activities, including accounting, payroll, financial statement preparation, budget preparation, debt management, cash and treasury management, and grant compliance. Finance generally follows accepted accounting principles and governmental accounting standards board statements applicable to city financial activities and has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for 38 consecutive years. The Human Resources Department provides full-service HR support to 565 full and part-time city employees. Through our recruitment process, we strive to attract, develop, motivate, and retain the best qualified employees whose diversity and skills contribute to and sustain the city as a quality organization. A few of the tools we use include recruitment selection and retention. In March of 2022, during a tight job market, the HR team in partnership with Brevard Career Source launched a successful job fair for city departments, resulting in multiple conditional offers accepted on the spot. Pay and compensation. A pay study was conducted and implemented on October 1, 2022. The study aimed to establish market equity and internal equity within similar organizations. In addition, a 5.4% cost of living adjustment was implemented. The city accelerated a statewide mandate for a minimum wage of $15 per hour. Florida Department of Economic Opportunity first responder payments were distributed, and law enforcement recruitment bonus payments were processed for officers hired after July 1, 2022. Employee benefits. The administration of employee benefits, including, but not limited to, a partially self-funded healthcare plan, an off-site employee health center, a wellness program, an employee health fair, complete with blood pressure checks, flu shots, skin cancer and diabetes screening, and other wellness activities, dental, life insurance, employee assistance, 401A and 457 deferred compensation programs and defined contribution plan, included in the city's competitive benefits package, and an employee self-funded workers' compensation program. Labor relations, service worker negotiations, police union ratification, and fire union negotiations concluded with a deal on all three-year successor agreements. Employee development. The employee evaluation process was streamlined, making it more efficient and effective. Safety. Risk management develops and administers various citywide programs and training. Most recently, defensive driving instruction occurred for anyone driving a city vehicle. The Information Technology Department controls the citywide network and all attached devices. Using fiber optics, the wide-area network connects 19 buildings throughout the city, each with its own local network. We manage the city's software services, including the 911 dispatch system, the city's financial management system, community development and code enforcement systems, fleet and fuel management, water billing and collection, work order management for public works, facilities, and water resources, a variety of public safety systems for the police and fire departments, as well as email systems and a variety of file and print services. Notable achievements for 2022 include conducting and completing an independent security audit, upgrading and updating the city's 911 telecommunications center operating system and hardware to the latest technology, completing the annual computer replacement project of over 100 individual systems, and completing a three-year contract with Microsoft to upgrade the city's software infrastructure to provide significant new capabilities. Last year, our help desk team resolved 1,843 requests for help from employees through our ticketing system. We also saved the city over $127,000 on new server hardware due to a diligent warranty requirement review. Lastly, Mike Ardidi, our systems analyst and certified drone instructor, trained the police department to use their new drone technology. Located just north of City Hall, the Titusville Marina is a full-service boating destination overseen by F-3 Marina management. The Marina boasts over 200 slips, mooring opportunities for daily and monthly renters, and a boater's indoor/outdoor lounge. The Marina's other amenities include newly renovated restrooms, Wi-Fi, pump-out service, security gates, and a boater's gift shop. The Marina is open year-round and averages a 94% to 100% occupancy rate during the busy season. The Purchasing and Contracts Division provides procurement services to user departments to promote the effective, efficient, and economical acquisition of all supplies and services, ensuring the city maximizes its return and complies with legal purchasing requirements. We are responsible for the annual procurement of approximately $41 million worth of goods, services, annual contracts, construction projects, and professional service agreements. In 2022, the department made over $8.6 million in purchases from local vendors within Titusville. Some of our department's major purchasing projects include Area 3 wellfield electrical upgrade, fiscal year '22 annual road resurfacing, causeway lift station improvement, professional services for Marina Dock C and E replacement, design-build modular for fire station, Indian River Forest Main Project, urban tree canopy assessment and report, and architectural style and design guide project. In fiscal year 2022, our department achieved over $1 million in savings from smart bidding practices and oversaw the disposition of surplus assets exceeding over $76,000. We also continued participation in the Brevard County Public Entity Purchasing Cooperative to achieve better pricing for the purchase of commodities as well as continue networking opportunities. The Special Projects and Grants Division assists city departments and divisions in obtaining grant funding to help offset the cost of eligible programs. The Special Projects Coordinator aids departments in researching new grant opportunities and coordinating with federal, state, and private agencies for grant applications and lifecycle management. As a National Grants Managers Association member, the Special Project Coordinator ensures that the city adheres to uniform federal guidance and governance. At the same time, they administer over $9 million in annual grant expenditures. Additional responsibilities of this division include coordinating FEMA disaster recovery funding, compiling and maintaining data for strategic planning and performance measures, maintaining administrative policy, co-coordinating the Lean Six Sigma Program, and acting as a liaison to the Pritchard House, the Titusville Welcome Center, and joint projects with the Titusville Chamber of Commerce. This department also coordinates the annual Red, White, and Boom 4th of July fireworks celebration and other special events. In 2022, we coordinated the community farmer's market, which utilized $283,000 in federal grant funding, providing over 5,000 food assistance token disbursements that supported Titusville residents and local vendors. The Support Services Department remains steadfast in our commitment to the citizens of Titusville, playing our part in ensuring they get the best from their local government as we head down the road to a brighter future.
Wow, good job. All the things we don't know. Anyway, anything else?
Yes, sir.
I guess some of the numbers hit me. I can't remember exactly what it was, but 126,000 payments taken online for water and getting the water shut-offs down to like 200 for an entire year. That's important, that's real important. So I'm very impressed with the entire team. Obviously, you're there and you represent the team, but I realize it's a team of 500-ish. So thank you and thank you all, Council. I see nothing. I don't know, no, they always do that to me. Now I see several. Thank you. Good call. Member Cole.
And Tom, thank you so much. And was that video put together in-house?
Everything was put in-house.
I mean, that was extremely professionally done.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And you even kept this old man's attention the whole time.
Yeah, other cities are constantly asking.
No, really, thank you so very much.
It's a great team.
Well done. All right, thank you, sir. City Manager.
Next item is the Item D, which is the FY 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And Zach Chalifor from James Moore and Company will do the presentation. Zach?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
All right, good evening. Zach Chalifor, partner of James Moore and Company. I feel like that's a tough act to follow. You know, I feel like I need a great video, but you're unfortunately stuck with just me. Although we did do a video three years ago, you know, right when we were in the start of COVID, I guess. But that was, my video was not produced as well as that, I know that for a fact. So nonetheless, we are here to review the annual audit for the September 30, 2022 fiscal year. First and foremost, a big thank you to the Council for the opportunity to work or continue working with the city.
Thank you.
This year, a big thank you as well to the Finance Team, Terry and her team. Jenna and Phyllis are both here this evening for all of their help through the process. And of note, too, this year is that we are here about a month earlier than it's been the last couple of years. So the report date, the wrap-up date, everything was even a couple of weeks earlier this year than usual. So it is, you know, worth bringing up, I do believe. So nonetheless, to jump into, if I have this working right, if that's on, is it going? All right, I might need help from whoever's running the... Oh, wait. Have it on, oh, wait. There we go. See, we're accountants, not technology specialists, I gotta think. Maybe?
Maybe.
It says it's on now. All right, just now, right?
Normally, the battery. All right, call the expert.
That's not just me.
Let me go, Taylor?
It's always the battery.
We had done it.
Well, you can always set the song.
I don't think you want that. So anyway, we'll just jump into a few comments, the first of which was reflected in the video in reference to the fact that the city does prepare what's called a comprehensive, an annual comprehensive financial report. Thank you. There we go. So as was mentioned there, 38 years, this is, I believe, 39 years that this will get submitted once again for that award. We have every expectation that the city will receive that again for this year's financial statements. And ultimately, what that represents is that there's kind of a minimum requirement to satisfy the state statute reporting requirements and so forth. And the ACFOR, as it's now called, is kind of a standardized additional expanded level of financial reporting, kind of the ultimate level for government. So the city, again, has met those requirements. We expect to see that certificate awarded once again. With regard to the financial statements, the whole document's pushing 200 pages. I know Terry said earlier she, you know, wants to never go over that. It's already long enough as it is. But it's worth noting that document is entirely prepared by staff. And then there's five reports that go in there that represents really the findings or results of the audit. The first report that we issue is the Audit Report on... Uh, the first report that we issue is the audit report on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue and says that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects effectively, that you can rely on the numbers. Uh, the second report we issue is on internal control and compliance. And while we're not auditing internal controls, we do consider your internal controls as it relates to our, our testing over the financial activities of the city. We had no items to report there in terms of internal control deficiencies or any compliance matters related to grants, budget, debt, or otherwise. Uh, the third report we issue is a single audit report. Uh, this year, we performed both a federal and state single audit, uh, where it's just kind of a mini-compliance audit, uh, focused solely on, you know, a very detailed level of compliance. We had no findings or compliance issues, uh, identified there. Uh, the fourth report is a management letter required by the Florida Auditor General, kind of a catch-all of different items the state wants us to look at. We had only one, uh, modification, uh, for just, you know, an other kind of comment recommendation, nothing of any significance or concern, uh, but no other modifications in that report, um, to highlight. And then the final report that we issue is we look at the city's compliance uh, as relates to state statutes over investments and investment policy, and did note the city to be in compliance, in our opinion. Uh, then lastly, we do issue this, the third year now, where we issue a separate report for the CRA. Uh, includes exact same numbers and disclosures and did also have the same set, um, of clean reports, but did want to just identify and acknowledge there is a separate audit report solely for the CRA that was also issued. All right, it worked last time. There we go. Um, whoops, it went twice. There we go. All right. So as we always do, we take a three-year look at your general fund, fund balance, kind of your reserves in total. Uh, year-over-year, you were, but went to about $18 million in total fund balance. Uh, that's broken into a different, a few different buckets where the higher it is, the less you have any ability to spend it. The lower it is, the more it is kind of available as a general reserve. Uh, just a couple of quick items. The biggest item they committed there, that is where, uh, the council stabilization policy of over $6 million, that bucket of, uh, reserves resides in that committed fund balance. Uh, just to quickly highlight that because that does tie back to, uh, policy adopted by this body. Uh, what I always like to do is take kind of those bottom-line numbers, the assigned, which represents earmarked fund balance, and the unassigned, and compare that to what did you spend last year and to say, you know, how many months or what percent in reserves do we have? Uh, looking at those fund balance classifications as well as the stabilization reserve, you have about $16 million there relative to $44 million in expenditures. It's about a 36%, a little over four months in reserves. Uh, the minimum recommendation out there from the GFOA is a, is a two-month minimum, recognizing that for coastal communities, another month or two is absolutely, uh, typically very prudent given the risk of hurricanes and otherwise. So it is one where, you know, you're, you're over those minimum recommendations and it's kind of been a, a long time, um, you know, progression upward. When we first started working with you all five years ago, I know that number was, I think, below the minimum. So we've seen lots of positive movement, which is a, a very good thing as we go into a lot of financial uncertainty for both revenues with a, you know, if there's a recession and just expense uncertainties. You guys are going into that from a very strong position, wow, which is a great thing just given that future uncertainty. Uh, looking at your proprietary funds, we always do a quick, just kind of gut check, look at what we call the unrestricted net position, kind of your bottom-line reserves in each of these funds. Uh, operationally, year-over-year, no major red flags or concerns, um, that popped up. Uh, we do have these bottom-line numbers. Uh, three of them show as a negative, but that's due to the, the OPEB liability as well as the pension liability. So if you back those out to kind of your operational items, those are all, uh, in addition to the utility fund showing up in the positives. So no major issues or concerns as we look at the performance of all of those funds. And then, as I mentioned, pensions and OPEB, we always do like just to touch on that and acknowledge that you do show, um, you know, some liabilities on your financial statements for the pension plans and OPEB, but these are ultimately, I look at more for reporting purposes. You know, you're making all of your required contributions every year, and that's the, the biggest key. The rest of this is just taking what your actuaries do or the, the pension board actuaries to calculate those unfunded liabilities and comply with accounting standards by presenting those, uh, in your financial statements. Uh, year-over-year, your pension plans, uh, you know, were over 100% funded last year in the low 80s this year. Uh, it's what we've seen kind of across the board, just based on what the market did. Uh, I always kind of focus on the fact that pensions are about the long game and having good controls and management in place to ensure those are sustainable. And that's absolutely always been done. The rest of this is just kind of going along the ride from a financial reporting perspective, uh, as we see kind of what the market does year in and year out. Uh, so overall, you know, pretty positive there, seeing the continued just kind of trends despite this, you know, dip that should come up to some degree, uh, next year. And then lastly, on pensions, we always, uh, the last few years have been comparing where those pension plans are at relative to, uh, the Florida retirement system in terms of the discount rates. Uh, they are a little bit higher, but it's been good seeing those come down, uh, the last number of years from what was at 8%. Uh, what we've seen generally kind of just in the industry is lots of pension plans are kind of targeting a 7% uh, or so, but that is something that is determined by the pension board. But as you can kind of see, those percentage returns have come down over recent years. So it has, you know, come pretty close to kind of what we're seeing, uh, across pension plans all over the state. Uh, so those are the, the highlights. Try to keep as brief as possible, but I'd be more than glad to answer any questions, expand on anything, um, and maybe, you know, put together a video for next time.
Counsel, any questions? No? Okay. I see no questions. I appreciate your report, and I would say that I appreciate you, uh, kind of giving us a individual report that, you know, we could ask more questions, but this is a very basic overview. And in the end, from, uh, meeting with you and hearing you now, it sounds like you're, you're pleased with where we're at and the direction we're going. That's a yes.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Kind of, kind of like in court, we like to get that on. All right. Well, anyway, thank you so very much. I do appreciate the work you do and, and the way you do it. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks a lot. Good seeing everyone.
Thank you so much. Senior Manager.
Thanks. Uh, onto Item 4E, which is the, um, Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. Representatives of Canons and Associates of Orlando will provide a presentation on the draft amendments to the city's Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. The draft amendments are to the future land use, transportation, and housing elements. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to introduce the consultants here. We have Brian Canon with Canons Associates, now with Kimble Horn. Uh, we have Eliza Giuliani, and we have Angela Coles. Um, so they will give you the status of this large project, and you'll see them again in the future, too.
Perfect. And thank you for being here, and, uh, it's good to see you guys again. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. Um, so we're talking today about a project that really builds on a project that we did with your city several years back called Titusville Tomorrow. Um, so we're going to talk a little bit about the project background and then, and get into what we're specifically focused on as part of this project. So as I said, brief background on that project. What we're focused on this round is three specific focus areas. So before, we did a vision for the city as a whole. And now we're focused on three geographic areas where we're going to go into a little more depth and start to get into standards and policies that are, uh, specific to those areas. We'd like to leave time, so we may go through some of the slides pretty quickly. We, we hope to have time for comments and, uh, and questions from this group at the end. So in terms of project background, um, some key points that we had from the previous effort were that there's, we're in a really favorable context. There's growth in the region, particularly as it relates to the rebound of the space industry. That said, the city historically has been growing fairly slowly. So how do we shift the city of Titusville's brand and, uh, approach to growth to, to capture more of that energy that's happening within the region as a whole? And we know too, since we were here last time, there has been some more movement in downtown and some, some, um, some big projects that have come in, but it's still moving at a relatively slow pace. At the same time, we also want to see that growth happen in a, in a smart way that's consistent with the city's vision and values. And a big part of that is place-making, which creates economic and social value. So, as we went through that plan, we went back to the community and we engaged the community several times during that plan, as well as leadership, and, um, came to consensus on a number of items, but I want to focus on a few. They are the need to reimagine three key areas within the city, the downtown, the waterfront, and the gateways, and we'll talk at length about those. Um, that effective infill and redevelopment is a big part of the strategy. The places that we're talking about focusing already have development on the ground, but in some cases, it is far below what, um, what would create kind of energy and business development opportunities that, that the city could really capitalize on. And downtown is a big part of that. And at the end of the day, the, the citizens agreed that participated in the process that these initiatives would effectively reposition the city for a positive future. So we talk about creating value, and what that means is creating this sense of place creates value for citizens in that it creates places that they want to be, that they want to live their lives. It creates value for businesses because places where people want to be, if you look at your business there, your business will typically do well. And finally, it creates value for the city to the extent that people spend time, that, that people invest, that people spend, uh, money at businesses within the city, then that generates revenue for the city, which can be reinvested into services for citizens. So I mentioned the three key areas. Um, for the Titusville Tomorrow Vision Plan, those three areas were the downtown, the waterfront, and the gateways. For this effort, we're focused on two of those three, but we really like the number three, so we split that back out into three again. So the, the three areas, the, the three focus areas for this effort are the downtown as split into the downtown core and the downtown neighborhood, specifically west downtown, and the gateways. And I'm going to spend the balance of the presentation talking about those three areas along with Brian. So let's start with downtown. And we mentioned i- in the previous effort, downtown was a larger geographic area that we were looking at, but now we're really focused on two sort of sub-areas of the greater downtown, which is, um, the core downtown, generally the area between the train tracks and the water, which is where the historic Main Street of Titusville is essentially, and then west downtown. And that's going to be the second leg of this presentation, talking about west downtown. So first, we're going to talk about the core downtown, um, the east side. So the focus here is about creating a place people are excited to be. And we already know that people are excited to come to downtown Titusville for events, for, uh, weekends, but it's important to think about a sense of place and a memorable idea, i- identity that keeps people coming back, and a place that people want to spend a significant amount of time. So it's one thing to go to a store and then drive in and leave. What really makes a successful place, and it's not that different from a suburban mall or a theme park, you want people to spend the whole day in downtown Titusville, whether they're walking in or biking in or driving in. They need to get out of their car and spend time walking the streets, patronizing multiple businesses, and that's where you start to get really get, um, a, a successful ecosystem that creates value for your, your small businesses. Part of that involves creating walkable, bikeable environments. It also involves having attractive places for people to gather together, either for events or between those, uh, those, patronizing those different businesses, and generally generating more activity downtown. What's also important, uh, we are going to talk in more detail, I said, about west downtown in a minute, but the, the synergy between downtown and west downtown is really important because downtown creates a place that people want to live close to, and they have the opportunity to live downtown or in west downtown and be within a really close distance of all of those great amenities of downtown. And having a great downtown creates a place, uh, having a successful neighborhood next to downtown also supports those downtown businesses and creates a more robust multimodal environment. So I mentioned that people are coming downtown for some of these big events, maybe to go out to dinner. What we're talking about is expanding that to an 18-hour place. We could say a, a 24-hour place, but hopefully people are sleeping sometimes. So we go with an 18-hour place. And what that means is having more people living downtown, having more people working downtown. That makes for more successful businesses because they don't have to rely on just Friday night and Saturday traffic. They can, they can, a restaurant, for instance, can get lunch traffic and breakfast traffic, and all of that adds up to more successful, successful business environment. Um, it also makes for a more secure environment because if you know that a place is going to be busy and have eyes on the street 18 hours a day, then you feel more comfortable walking back to your car later in the evening or coming in earlier in the morning because people live and have ownership over this part of the community. And as I mentioned earlier, um, all of this connects back to having places people want to walk, places people want to gather. So we talked to you all, as well as some other, uh, members of the leadership within the community, about what you saw as opportunities in downtown, as well as liabilities. And you can see those here. I won't go through all of them, but some, some key points are the Arts District as centered on the Titusville Playhouse, the idea that that's a growing magnet within downtown, of course capturing some of that space tourism and bike tourism from the Coast to Coast Trail. Um, but there's a lack of housing and housing that's available, sometimes it's expensive, and generally, the economic viability is not where it could be. So I'm going to hand it off to Brian to talk in more detail about some of the specific visioning concepts.
Thanks, Eliza. I'd, I'd like to start out saying, uh, Mayor and Council, one of the most valuable things we got was keeping us between the white lines as we started this project, and, you know, meeting with Scott and each of you individually was, was tremendously valuable. So we've got a good focus out of that. Um, we're doing some things that are very long in time span, you know, new policies that'll be with the city for many years. But one of the special focuses that we've had is how do we transform and do some of the things Eliza explained soon and change and, you know, have a positive impact near-term? So, um, with that in mind, we focused on this site. This site actually came up, uh, for consideration in our earlier work as an opportunity, and we've, we've taken it to another level. Um, we think it's a near-term opportunity. And why, why is that important? Because we want to transform the feeling of downtown, create a sense of energy and something that's happening soon. And, you know, Mariners Way is that opportunity for us. So a couple of good things about it. It builds on the old towns located right next to the historic buildings. It's, it's all about engaging people with a waterfront, which is one of the big policies that we've all been talking about. It's in public ownership, so you don't have to go out and buy any land to do this. Um, and it's, it can be a very dynamic setting for events, which we'll show a little bit later. And it's got some great trees. It's got some great existing trees. And, um, and you recognized it, some of you recognized it in your leadership meetings with us. So this is sort of looking down on it. You can see the, um, the beautiful vegetation, and it's really underutilized. It's, it's a parking lot. Um, so we came up with this concept. We showed it to the community meeting. Uh, we got a lot of questions. What about parking? Well, uh, it's a good question. And, uh, we made sure that when we studied this, that, um, if we took out those 68 existing parking spaces, we would add 53 additional. So we'd end up with 128, I think it is. So we're not going to go deficit on parking. Um, this is a, a plan that might be at build-out. But what we're excited about is how to get near-term opportunities. So what we can see and imagine is we can start this by just improving the park and removing the parking, planting some more trees. And we can then introduce temporary uses, if you will, that are still energetic, like food trucks and small pop-up, um, you know, commercial opportunities in pads that later can transform themselves. So this shows an early phase, you know, the food trucks are in there. And then later, they transform to buildings when people see an opportunity for a restaurant or some other small store. So this is one more shot for you. And then we've looked at the, the bigger area of downtown for some strategic ideas, and there's four of them that excite us. One we struggled with early on was how do we create a main street? Because we need a street that's calm and long so you can promenade up and down, 10-minute walk up, 10-minute down, and is very attractive and doesn't have high traffic. So Palm Avenue surfaced for us as a big opportunity. Mariners Way is the real, real near-term opportunity, which we just discussed. Um, Palm Avenue is also connected to the Arts District, which is one of your initiatives. It's very exciting to us. And, you know, it's anchored by the Playhouse and what's going on down there. And we, uh, are exploring with Brad in some detail for another meeting with you how we can energize near-term development with over- near-term development with overlay incentive-driven districts. One of the things, just background, that's been in our minds slowing development downtown a lot is these very small parcels. So you don't see any large parcels that a big developer can come in and pick up and do a new building. That's okay with us because we've been doing this in another venue, which Eliza will explain to in more detail, where we've got a way to do redevelopment with small parcels and individual events that are very attractive. So that's what number four is. And this is sort of a build-out plan once one of these overlays is fully implemented and every lot is occupied, but actually would really happen incrementally, and she'll explain that in a little more detail. But this is the streetscape we envision on Palm Avenue. It's 50-foot right away, and we can do an overlay and get an extra few feet from the adjoining parcels. And then on Garden Street, we have 80 feet, so Garden Street can look like that, much easier to achieve. And also, that's part of the gateway. So Garden Street, we have two sites on Garden Street, one on Palm Avenue and then one further to the west, that if we get this type of development rolling can energize not only the corridor but energize the area. And that's another example of that. I'm going to turn this back to Eliza.
So to summarize from more of a policy level standpoint what this means, it, some of the overall task that we will be following up next with is looking at how we need to clarify and enhance the existing downtown policies and standards to enable this vision that we've been talking about today. That includes things like strengthening tree and landscape standards, having clear build-to lines, so if there's a vision that we're going to have a walkable street that is more like the historic buildings on US-1, that needs to be reflected in the code and not just allowed but required, because it's currently allowed but not necessarily required. It also involves reevaluating some of the mixed-use and active-ground floor requirements. While that, those active-ground floors are absolutely a positive thing to have in downtown, requiring them in the wrong places can be a deterrent to new development, so we need to make sure they're required in the right amounts and in the right places. So now shifting to west downtown. In talking with leadership about west downtown, we understood that what was really, one thing that was really important was the enhancement of Main Street, which connects into downtown and is, of course, a really important historic street within the community on both sides of the railroad tracks, taking advantage of that connection to the Coast to Coast Trail, and as well as dealing with concerns about housing, the potential concerns of people who live there now about displacement, as well as public safety and industrial, which we'll talk about a little bit more. So this diagram shows a high-level view that we shared at the community meeting about some of the big factors within west Titusville now. One of the big benefits is those connections to downtown on Main Street, Garden, and South. At the same time, there are very few connections because of the railroad tracks blocking the streets going through there, but it's still a huge asset to be that close to downtown. There's also, similar to what Brian said, but even more so, smaller lots within west downtown, which is also is a constraint on development, but maybe a good constraint on development because the type of missing-middle, small-scale investments that would make sense in Titusville and be compatible with the community would be at that smaller scale. So you also see kind of the orange on the top and the orange on the bottom, that's where those bigger streets come through, and so what's happening in those portions of the block reacts to those streets as well as to the internal dynamics of the neighborhood. And then the purple is the more industrial uses. There's actually more industrial uses than this, which we'll see in a minute, but the purple in the middle is a big utility site that's probably going to be there for a very long time because it's an important piece of infrastructure. And then on the north side is the kind of consolidation of industrial areas, and it also is indicated in the future land use as continuing to be industrial use. So this is the existing conditions, and I'm not going to go into all this detail, but you see the purple shows up in a number of different places. But what we did with this was we looked at how it connected to those goals. So on the top bar, you see the Main Street, which is the portion that connects to downtown. It's really what you would see making sense as that growth area connecting downtown and west downtown. And then the bottom right, what we were looking for was we've got industrial, we've got residential. We love mixed use, but the type of mixed uses we typically envision is places that you as a resident would want to go on a regular basis. Most industrial uses are not things that you as a resident are going to walk to on a daily basis, maybe if you work there, but most likely, that's not the coffee shop on the corner, right? So what we looked for was if we were thinking about where industrial was going to be in the long term and where residential is going to be successful, we wanted to focus on where those consolidated areas were. So on the bottom right, you see what we're calling the core residential area. That's where we see the most existing residential uses, as well as the most existing residential homeowners. And so that, both of those are indicators that this is a residential area that's going to be supported over time. And so we took that information, all of those factors we've been talking about so far, and consolidated, dated them into one diagram, talking about what the assets were to build on, what the constraints were to respond to, and this is what we came up with. So essentially, we see that industrial emigration continuing to be on the northeast side, we see that core residential neighborhood on the southeast side, you see the response to both the north and south corridors as well as Park Avenue. And then the orange that you see on the, kind of the middle of the northwest side and the southwest side, that's where we see an opportunity for incremental positive change. So there's a lot of vacant lots in these areas. There are also existing residents that want to remain in these areas, so how do we have new development come in that fills in those missing teeth but is also compatible in scale with what's already there? And then, of course, the blue is that connection to Main Street, so that's where we want to see something that's going to draw people back and forth over that railroad track, over that east-west line. So if you look at that diagram, and I'll go back real quick, compared to this diagram, which is the existing future land use, they look quite different. For instance, this diagram, the blue, light blue there, the UMU, doesn't really respect that existing core residential area. It identifies a lot of residential in some areas that are mostly vacant, so we're trying to think about in the next step how we could start to align the existing conditions with what we think the future opportunities are in ways that increase compatibility over time. So when we talk about compatibility, for instance, this is that utility-scale infrastructure that's in the middle of the neighborhood. If you live in that house and you're looking across the street at that, it may not be what you want to see when you wake up in the morning. So this is a situation where that's probably not going anywhere, so what do we do about that? Well, in this case, it's a mitigation issue. How do we look at things like landscaping, things like maybe a masonry wall that would help to address that? We actually see there is some landscaping there that just isn't in great shape, so it may be just simply talking with that owner and getting them to bring it back up to what the code was. In future, if you're going to have these kinds of adjacencies, having something more sturdy like a masonry wall may help to mitigate that in the long term. Kind of a similar situation here, this may be less of a, well, we don't know if, this doesn't have the same kind of infrastructure entanglement that the utility does. But again, some of the similar issues of compatibility, there's a vacant lot right across the street. Would you invest in that vacant lot based on what you're looking at across the street? So what can we do to recognize that that use is allowed to be there, but how do we mitigate that adjacency? And what we, from a technical standpoint, what we're talking about is mainly outdoor storage, outdoor-type activities. In contrast, this is also an industrial use, but it's all indoors, and so it doesn't function or look all that different than a typical commercial use. It's got some decent landscaping, some trees that really facilitate that neighborhood compatibility. It's also on the edge of the neighborhood, so it's on one of these corridors. So to summarize this discussion, mainly centered on the industrial piece, there's basically two ways of addressing it. One is geographically, how do we focus the areas to the extent that it's possible within the legal constraints to consolidate the stable residential areas and recognize where the long-term industrial areas are going to be and try to separate those a little bit? And then where we can't separate them, how do we mitigate those adjacencies so that everybody can have a good experience? We also want to recognize that industrial both is an important economic part of the city and can be interesting. So there's some really fun things we see happening in industrial areas across the state that draw people in, that can actually be community-serving uses. This is what's called a maker space in central, in the city of Orlando, where they're actually bringing in food trucks and encouraging the community to participate in that space. Now, this is not going to happen everywhere, but industrial can also be, is also small businesses, it also supports craft industries that are increasingly making the things that people are interested in terms of handmade goods that can be a draw into downtown and a draw into west downtown. Second thing, we talked about those orange areas. The focus there is really missing-middle housing, and Brian showed you the image earlier, but let's talk about what we mean by missing-middle. What's not missing-middle is big apartment complexes. We know what those are, we know how they interact with the city. And single-family houses, we have plenty of neighborhoods with single-family houses. What regulations across the country don't tend to do a good job of is dealing with what's in-between those kind of extremes, which is a broad range of housing that exists historically and in fact exists in the city of Titusville, but isn't always regulated for, to encourage it. So this presents an opportunity to have small-scale investment, increase in the amount of housing available, which we know housing, the housing crunch is a real issue, that is also in the character and context of the neighborhood. So these are just some existing, both older and newer examples of what we would consider missing-middle housing, realistically on the low end of missing-middle housing. And the diagram that Brian showed you earlier, which was on the A-spot in downtown, that what he referred to as the build-out, can also equally apply to the B lots on Garden Street that are part of west downtown. And not only that, but those typologies can be applicable on those vacant lots throughout the neighborhood. This is a specific study that we did in another transitioning industrial district in Winter Park, and so we've studied this in some detail prior to even coming into the city of Titusville to talk about this. So we really think this is a good opportunity, and in fact, these do introduce the potential as well for some mixed uses, again, compatible mixed uses that could be in the residential neighborhoods in the right place. So to sum up, in terms of west downtown, we're talking about that compatibility component, what goes where so that we can have good neighbors, and eliminating barriers to this missing-middle development. So we've shown some vision of what could be, we need to go back, just as with downtown, and evaluate how that comports with the existing policies and standards and what needs to be changed to make that real. So last section here is the gateway corridors. What we mean when we say the gateway corridors is the major roads coming into downtown. From a branding standpoint, this is how many people experience, gateway corridors coming into the city, not just downtown. This is how many people experience the city of Titusville for the first time, and so what they see is important and how they experience it. So that favorable first impression. There's also a functional component here. These corridors are the major highways coming into the city, they carry a lot of traffic, they're not going to have the same bike-walk component as downtown, but they do have the opportunity to improve upon their bike-walk accessibility, especially since they are often also our transit corridors. And they provide some of the larger parcels that might facilitate redevelopment and placemaking. So we thought the comments that we got from, this built on the comments we got from leadership and very consistent with the comments we received last time. So we looked at one particular example on Cheney Highway. It's a commercially-zoned property today, and we looked at what place-based design might look like in that area. We looked at two different versions, this is the lower-intensity version, creating commercial uses that people can come to and making sure there's some connectivity so the neighborhoods might be able to access it by walking or biking, but people will also be, of course, driving in, you see substantial parking to reflect that. The other thing you see is a frontage road, so there's a road that's set back from the main drive, which both deals with access management for cars, but also provides a place that's much more comfortable to walk and bike than being right up on Cheney Highway, as well as provide some landscaping opportunities with the trees that you see. And then the higher-density version of that just increases the housing opportunity and the ability to address that, as well as the economic opportunity to have people close to those businesses. So this essentially, the gateway corridors, we're talking about two levels. One is a more aesthetic level where we're dealing with things like trees, landscaping, and signage on all new development that would happen on these corridors. And the other one is the more intense version, which you saw in those drawings, where if a particular opportunity property comes in, putting in place an optional overlay that they can opt into, which would allow them to increase what's possible on that property while also increasing the expectations of this, to meet the city's vision on that property for what it would look and how it functioned. So next steps, we will be taking these big, somewhat big-picture ideas that we've been sharing with you today. This is our first of three meetings with council, so we'll be taking these back and getting much more into the detail of how the standards and policies can enable the vision that we've talked about today, and what's their role in that. Our next meeting with you will be about a month from now on April 25th. So with that, our presentation is complete, and we'd be happy to hand it back to the mayor.
Standing presentation, obviously, there's a lot, a lot there, but I've seen an awful lot of opportunities. One of the things I saw in some pictures was a chance to develop the canopy we've talked about so often, especially the pictures I think I saw of Garden Street. I just thought, wow, that's what a great opportunity to canopy the place like we want it to be canopied. And just a lot of thoughts and some decisions, but for the most part, I just think it's a great vision. And then from there, move it to a plan, and then from there, move it to reality, but very impressed. Thank you very much for giving us the vision. Thank you. Member Stokel.
Yep, you hit my keyword, vision, and I think this is very timely. I know in our one-on-one, we had a lot to discuss, and then it seems like almost every council meeting, we're talking about this as we're getting new ordinances coming up, and we're talking about, does this make sense for high intensity or low intensity? And we're trying to figure out a vision because we're like, we need more high intensity, but we also need low intensity, and what does that look like for our vision for the city? And so I feel like you're giving us tools so we can make better decisions to say, yes, this is important, and this is where the vision, where it belongs in our city that makes the most sense. So I really appreciate it, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, again, very, very nice presentation. I remember our conversation over the phone, and I've had the opportunity to receive a lot of phone calls and questions from some of the property owners on the west downtown area and asking what does the future look like for that part of our city and the vision that is being held? And so there is that interest by the landowners, some of the landowners over there doing, creating housing, and also bringing in some more, you know, some businesses as well, a mixed-use type of neighborhood, and I think that it's a wonderful, wonderful vision, and I hope that, I think, the 25th of April, we continue our conversations, and I'm hoping that a lot of individuals who have spoken with me over since our conversation is tuning in tonight to, at least on the screen, to see what you have presented, and then if you have some, you know, some town hall meetings or some gathering of individuals within our community, they can come to those meetings and share their thoughts and hear your thoughts and see the vision of Titusville as we move off into the future.
Could this be something, or maybe it's already planned to be on our website, that people can click on it?
Yeah.
Yes, it will be posted along.
That'd be a good idea. I'd like to click on it more. Member Nelson.
And thank you for the street line, or the tree-lined streets. That's something that hopefully we're going to start in the next month or two, hopefully. But I'd love to see the whole city like that, so thank you.
Member Cole.
Yes, I really enjoyed your presentation.
Yes, I really enjoyed your presentation, and I'm, one of my questions is, this will be a phased approach, and are you going to help us with priorities in the areas? And the next question is to the city manager, are there any kind of grants available that would assist us in trying to make this come to fruition? Huh? You don't know? Okay. Well, it's something we can, because it's not going to be cheap.
We, we can probably come back and address the granting opportunities, because our Kimberley Horn capability is quite vast in that area. But to answer your question, which was a really great question, and it's been top of mind for us from day one, which is, you know, some of the policies and standards Eliza's talking about in the comp plan, you know, 20-year exercises, but we need short-term opportunities that change things relatively quickly. And that's why we're excited about these typologies that we showed, and we can explore them in more detail with you later, of how an individual lot owner that's sitting on a property that's 50 by 110 or 120 feet can have one of those buildings built relatively easily that has at least two units, two or three units. And what's really important about it is, from a mixed-use point of view, we found out that you've got to have transitional uses on the ground floor. So the ground floor starts out as a simple studio rental, and then as the demand changes for a yoga studio or a little, you know, bagel shop or something, 10 years later, they move the studio out and in goes the business. And that's critical. We've found that out through a lot of hard work. And the other ironic thing is that we're doing the same study in the city of Winter Park in an industrial area where they aspire to make it a design and arts district, which kind of just resonates exactly with what you're doing in Titusville.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you guys very much. Vision that can have us thinking and working on the canopy. I like it. Thank you. All right, you're done over there. Yes, sir? All right, petitions or requests from the public? You don't have to have a card.
Tony Shuffalo, the historic Norwood House, 715 Tropic Street, right in the new, talked about, West Downtown. From my historic, one of 12 locally-designated historic structures, from the front porch and various rooms of my house, I can see a gas company which vents quite frequently, and it's kind of scary, all that, all of a sudden, I think it's maybe going to blow up. There's a concrete plant I see. There's that junkyard you just saw a picture of that doesn't maintain his fences, and he's always piling his junk out on the street. For the wonderful community service people, the solid waste department, they come by, they had the claw truck out there today, taken up this junkyard's debris. I also have this electric utility site which has a great tower, and they periodically sound noises that they think are going to scare the birds away, but what they really do is irritate the neighbors with, I won't give you, I will give you, woo-woo-woo, wee-woo-woo, rah-rah-rah. And it goes on for 30 seconds, long enough for me to get my cellphone, get out of the house, and go and video it so I can capture that sound. Now, all that's being said because now you're talking about, now you're talking about rapid development, big infill, and there's a lot of empty property there. So I want us to be very cautious about what we do in this area. This is a very stable area. I have sets of neighbors whose kids went to school together all the way through high school and stuff. Now, they bring their kids home, and those kids play. So this is a stable area, and we don't want a lot of willy-nilly infill there. I think I need to speak with you, Sarah, about what some of my other neighbors have been saying. And I just want to point out to Cannon and Associates, with your tree talk, we've been talking trees to these people for over two and a half years as the Titusville Tree Team, and we have been talking about the benefits of canopy and the needs that we have in this city to really think and really implement tree planting, and also to keep our staff from issuing permits that are going to allow developers to clear-cut properties the way they are doing, which, you know, is still going on, even though we have this new, it's kind of weak tree ordinance. So I really appreciated the comment that we need to strengthen our tree ordinances. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, Lisa Moser, 3847 Lagerhead Lane, Mans. Actually, I've been a Titusville resident up until two years ago, almost all my life. And the Downtown area is my heart, and part of that reason, I think, was my mother had an antique store downtown Titusville in the 1970s. My husband and I went to the workshops in 2017, and then the last one last month. And they have a lot of great ideas. I'm going to disagree with one, and I disagreed on that night. Do not take the parking lot away from behind Mariners Way. There are those businesses on US-1 there, the coffee shop, I mean Hoffman's Table, the beauty slot, those people rely on that parking lot for the part of their business. There's a lot of elderly people. There's no other place. That one needs to stay. The other thing that, the Downtown gets going, then, then falls back, and we're back to getting back to the, you know, going again. Thank you, Dan. One thing that I see, we have these great ideas, we're missing one part of this. There's no captain to steer this boat. We need to get all the stakeholders together. That is the property owners, that's the business people, that is the residents, and that's the city. Get together and meet and see what we can do. We have business owners down here who their property owners won't help them get the buildings up to code or help. We have vacant pieces of property where the property owners won't rent to a new business because they want this much rent, they won't look at different ways to make it work for the first three years and help a business get. We need someone to drive the boat. And I think they're great ideas, but we need to have goals. Like they said, one year, two years, five years, not 10 and 20 years. Because I'd like to see the Downtown really be what it could be. I mean, we have the trails, we don't capitalize on that stuff. So I really would like to see, you know, get some sort of group together, sort of like the greater Renaissance of Titusville when, you know, the shuttle went down. They were very good in helping the community move forward and not rely on the government.
What about the Downtown merchants? Was that...
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of, you get a lot of Downtown merchants that will work together and others that won't, and then others will say, well, we don't need any more beauty shops, or we don't need any more of this. Competition is good. If you don't have a product, I'm going to go over here, and that will keep people Downtown. I mean, we just, we keep, we start, and then we go back. And we just see a lot of disconnect between business owners, property owners, and the city.
Now, when you say you need a captain for the ship, it kind of needs to, to me, needs to be somebody like we used to have with the Downtown merchants.
Right. I mean, but it's got to be getting with the property owners and have absolute, and meetings, and have them come and say to the city, is there some way to help?
Gotcha. Thank you.
So can I ask her a question?
Yes.
Lisa, can I ask you a question?
What?
So I understand your concern about the parking lot on Mariners Way. What would happen if we built a parking garage?
Back there? I mean...
Julius Street parking lot.
I, to me, it's no issue, but I, what I see right now, and you sit out front, there are Uber drivers who are stopping on Washington Avenue. We, there's more accidents, we have more people going from the left-hand lane to the, right into a parking lot and stuff. I mean, the accidents downtown have really increased. And you have the hair salons, you know, Hoffman's Table, they have a lot of people who get dropped off, and then their elderly person is driving and needs to park over there. You have business owners who, you know, would like to be able to unload and stuff like that. I just think that is not a good...
Solution.
Solution. And I think if you said to those business owners along US-1, Playa Linda, the barber shop, and all them, you're going to have...
Obino, Hoffman's.
You're going to have a big fight on your hands. I really do.
Unless we can increase the parking, I don't think you mess with the parking. But I think they, they said, I think they said they could increase.
When we went, they didn't have any idea exactly where that would be. Let's take that away. And actually, and Tom said, do more parking on Broad Street. You know, Broad Street between Hopkins and Palm and all that is wide, you could do the angle parking there.
We need to look at that, because I'm going to bet if you went there right now, there's no parking spots back there.
Yeah.
It's been my luck lately, anyway.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I knew we'd get together. Still trying.
Still trying. Michael Majak, Beachwood Court. To follow up with what the lady was just saying about that meeting, there was also some complaints about the HUD housing, the assisted-living facility that's there on that property that would go away to make that a park. You have to find another place for that, too. So the people from HUD and Housing Development were kind of concerned.
Stop the clock. Where is that exactly?
The Titusville Towers.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got you.
Right on the other side of the parking lot from...
Okay, got you. Go ahead, start the clock. Well, go ahead, clarify that.
So in response to the comments that we received during the public meeting, the, the concept to remove the HUD housing was eliminated from the drawing, so you didn't see that today.
Okay, thank you. All right, start the clock.
Okay. Well, the other issue, or another issue I had, was the, the West Downtown. You know, change happens. It's inevitable, and it's a requirement if we're going to grow. But we do have to be careful with it. I don't want to see the gentrification of that area, if you know what I mean. We have people that have lived here for generations that lived there, and I don't want to see them displaced. One of the things that upset me the most about the presentation was seeing how much interspersed industrial was mixed in with residential. That's, that's abhorrent to anybody, and it should be abhorrent to the city. So yeah, that needs to be cleaned up. If we're going to make it residential, if we're going to make it commercial, then we have to move the industrial someplace else. But I don't think we should be forcing people to live next to industrial facilities. Okay, that's one. How much time I got left? Boy.
Minute seventeen.
The other thing that concerns me, I've been to many of these meetings, and I've met these people before. I've also done the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council meetings. We do a good effort, I think, of gathering input from the citizens. What we do atrociously is turn that into the metrics from the meeting from March 7th, where the city's goals are not being set by the people. You've got people coming to these meetings, telling these wonderful folks that you paid for what we want, and it's not getting incorporated into what you're doing. Because the city doesn't use those to feed its metrics, to decide if it's going to grow, or how it's going to grow, or how much it's going to grow, or what it takes to do a better job, like recording the TEC meetings, or any other meeting where you have a quorum and you have to have somebody record it. Every one of those should be video. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mix up.
Good evening. Stan Johnston. I'm coming here today as a professional engineer, and I'm licensed by the state to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And I'm here to report to you something that although you guys are nice guys, and I like you, is that there's a lot of things that the city is doing that is not, is failing to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And so I brought two of them here. One is that spraying, spraying, you've seen this, spraying women and children and babies with sewage. It's, it's, it's not a good idea, it's not healthy, and it continued for months, and we couldn't, I couldn't get the city to turn it off, and cars were, some cars were soaked with sewage. And it's a, it's a hazardous material, and we know that some people are very sick with that now. Because, well, because why? Well, the city manager, he wouldn't turn them off, the city didn't turn them off, and you guys wouldn't turn them off either. You wouldn't turn off the fountains of sewage. And, and so we had, we just had, I just went to TEC, that's Titusville Environmental Commission, the last one, and I spoke to them at their request on the sewage spill that happened during Hurricane Eon. Well, we had nine city streets, nine city streets had sewage in them, overflowing, coming out of, coming out of the lift stations, coming out of the manholes and so forth, the Baker Sub, it was nine city streets. I got photos and everything, here's, here's photos and so forth. I, I put these, these red warning notices, I put them on City Hall, City Hall door, I put them, I took them to even Sarah Stokel's house, to his, his church, and to your house, and all other places. I put these red warning notices advising people of this sewage spill, and here's a photo of, of what the city did, putting sandbags around a lift station because that's where the sewage was coming out. And guess what the city did? City lied. City denied that this sewage spill ever happened. I witnessed it. I've got, I've showed the Titusville Environmental Commission at least 33 witnesses, plus myself as an expert witness. And he says I'm lying, the city manager. And so did you guys, too, because you say it never happened. It happened for a long time, although I report to, I sent these guys here. I sent all these guys here, these photos. And then they said it didn't happen. All these photos, and these people, we got all kinds of people. We got gag orders on all kinds of city employees who do not, who cannot tell me the truth, who cannot even speak, who run away when I have my camera going. They don't want to be photographed, they want to tell their name. I can, I can mention numbers. Count Nishin Scott Devine? He can't talk about things because...
Thank you, sir.
Well, straighten up, guys.
Mix up.
Time out here or something.
Anybody else?
Me. Me.
Go ahead, Member Cole.
Okay, I've...
Thanks.
I've been on city council for four months, and I feel to make, compelled to make a statement...
Have a seat, have a seat, brother.
To make a statement about what I have observed. Public comments give citizens a chance to voice their opinions and make suggestions on policy and ordinances, not to degrade our staff. If you want to disparage us elected officials, go for it. However, personal attacks and name-calling on the staff only diminishes the statue of the individual making those comments. I, I'm not... I request that you respect our staff who are every day doing their job to make Titusville a better place for us to live.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Member Cole. With that, we will, we're pretty late. We'll start at 7:05 with the next meeting. Meeting adjourned.